And I completely forgot about this part that I see of Reverend Clapton's here. And I wonder if you could please lead us an indication of this important meeting. Please stand.
Father God, in heaven, we just want to pause and say thank you. Thank you for an opportunity, heaven, to find a company of those brothers and sisters in Christ to take care of the affairs that you have predestined from the beginning of time that goes to be addressed in this moment, right here on this day. And we just come to say thank you. Father God, we ask for your blessings upon this board and all that they do. Father God, we know it's because of your grace and mercy that they're able to serve your people, your children, oh Lord, and we give you thanks and give them guidance, oh Lord, directions and justice, spirits, so that in all that they do it would be for the righteousness of the children that we serve in this school district. We say thank you. Bless the hearts and minds of those that are in attendance here on this evening, so that although we may differ, we may still leave here with the love of Christ in our hearts. These blessings, Father God, we ask in your son, Jesus' name. Amen. Pleased to be with you today, the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Sampernero.
Present.
Ms. Haylin.
Present.
Mr. Wilson.
Present.
Mr. Barry. Ms. Cooper.
Present.
Mr. Johnson. Ms. Shelley. Five present, two after.
Can I have a motion for adoption of the agenda? All right, I have a motion by Ms. Shelley and a second by Ms. Cooper. Um, on favor. I oppose. Hearing none, motion passes. All right, we're going to move on to number two, presentation of a report from a third-party evaluator. Our third-party evaluator did reach out to Dr. Williams. And she explained that typically she does not attend these meetings in person, which I was unaware of, because I thought we were doing some dates around to allow her schedule. In any event, we did have to change the meeting schedule, because we had it scheduled for Friday to try to accommodate Mr. Johnson's schedule. We knew he was going to be out this week, but we have obligation to respond to the application by the 17th, so we, anyway, we hit some time snafus. She is not here. Her evaluation is. And we're going to ask Mr. Lawrence if you would please do the presentation of the review as it is written and explain the process of the review, the response to the review from the Charter Association, and then the finalized review. There it is. Sorry, I have a flu last week, so sometimes I'm not. You have your microphone closer.
Title seventeen, section thirty-nine, eight-two, where the U.S. statute mandates this process. Because in section A of that statute, Madam President, members of the board, it says that the, uh, it says that there must be an evaluation conducted. On the board is to be afforded ninety days to evaluate such applications. It says that in your evaluation, the board shall determine whether each proposed charter complies with the law and rules, whether the proposal is valid, complete, financially well-structured, and educationally sound, whether it provides for a master plan for improving behavior and discipline in accordance with Title Seventeen, Section Two, five-two, whether it provides a plan for collecting data in accordance with Title Seventeen, thirty-nine, eleven, and whether it offers potential for fulfilling the purposes of this chapter or of this law. And in connection, and let me just emphasize one point there. It says that the school board shall determine, the school board, not me, superintendent, anybody else, the board. So this is an obligation that you have to determine whether or not the application and the proposal is valid, complete, financially well-structured, and educationally sound. A part of that due diligence is the additional requirement that there be a third-party evaluation that is conducted. And this is what, this is the specific language. It says, "The local board shall engage in a transparent application review process that complies with the latest principles and standards for quality charter school authorization as promulgated by the National Association of Charter School Authorizations, and shall provide for independent evaluation of charter proposal by a third-party with educational, organizational, legal, and financial expertise. A board shall send to the charter applicant, that is, the Neville Charter Association, either by electronic means or hand delivery, the final evaluation and recommendations, if any, of the third-party evaluator. Such information shall be sent, no later than five business days prior to the meeting at which the local board will take action on the charter proposal." This all comes from one section of the law, Madam President, members of the board, and also members of the public. And in response to this requirement regarding evaluation, there is a five-page document, up to five pages, that was submitted by the charter evaluator. Madam President, if you would like for me to read it verbatim, I can. But the report covers several domain areas, okay? And so it might take about ten minutes to read straight, if you want me to do that.
Okay, I will ask the board, first of all, would you like the evaluation read verbatim? The review?
The written evaluation.
Okay. Does anybody, we did provide copies in the back, Ms. Robinson. And so if you, they're also on Board Docs, so you can pull it up on your phone. If you go to Board Docs, if you go to the Monroe City School Board site, go to I'm Looking For, click Board Docs, click the Agenda for Today, and then you'll see the document there, so you can do it that way. Because I don't know how many copies are in back. We killed a lot of trees for you guys, though, so there are some back there. That said, is there anybody here who wants to listen to Mr. Lawrence drone on for the next ten to fifteen minutes reading the evaluation? Want to phrase it that way, not so much. Okay, board members, can you all assure me that you have read the review provided by the third-party evaluator? Thank you very much. Have I? Okay, that said, so the review has been presented. I will state that overall, the evaluator, the third-party evaluator, who it appears has evaluated past charter applications for us, including the one in my most recent memory from excellence charter. And so those, so this is not a new person to this. This is a person with a valid track record. And the overall recommendation was denial of the charter application.
And she also reviewed Neville's charter in 2012.
Oh, okay.
And she affirmatively approved it.
Okay, that habit was an approval. Interesting, okay. Okay, so that is where we landed with the evaluation review. Do board members have any other comments on this portion of our agenda?
So is the Neville Charter Association going to be able to come up?
Yes, so we could do that now at this point. We're going to go ahead and do that. Okay, can I invite the charter board representatives? I assume that at least being Mr. Shelby, Mr. Stuart Shelby. And Mr. Stuart Shelby, if you'd like, anybody else on your board to come up and kind of help support you, that's fine, too.
I have members from all sectors, Joe King as well, and Ms. Corey Williams.
Can you point them out?
Yes, right here. So anything that comes my way that I need support from.
Go ahead, have them, yeah. Come on up, and if you do have input, we just ask that you come to the microphone, because we are streaming this, and so it's just so people online can hear. And just by the way, take a second, make sure that you have looked at and turned off your ringers, so that they're not disruptive to the proceedings. We all know that by now, but just wanted to mention it. Okay, Mr. Shelby, you had a chance to look at the third-party review as well?
The original one, yes.
The original, okay, but not the finalized one? It was uploaded, the finalized was uploaded yesterday to Board Docs, but...
Yeah, I didn't see it when I looked this morning. I've got it, I've got it.
So go ahead and tell us, so you have submitted an application. We all, and I also believe that that was provided on the back table for those of you who have not had a chance to look at it before today. So according to your application, according to the review, go ahead and give us your response to the review, because I don't know that others in the room have had the privilege of seeing your response to Dr. Williams' review. Initial.
There were a few issues brought up by Dr. Williams. And we have, how we feel responded to those deficiencies, as she stated. Now, the first one, the mission and vision, you know, demonstrates a clear intent to elevate Neville High School from good to great, emphasizes leveraging the school's historical and cultural significance. However, deficiencies include a failure to articulate actionable steps or measurable outcomes to achieve the stated goals, as well as insufficient clarity on how proposed instructional and extracurricular alignment will directly impact student outcomes. So it did, our proposal did contain the specific goals and measurable outcomes tied directly to the high school performance calculator. Additionally, those proposed addition of P.E. courses designed for the already high-achieving group of students, jumpstart student credentials, and remediation for students struggling specifically in reading gaps by using the research-based Lexia online supplemental curriculum will support direct impacts for student outcomes. Lexi provides immediate response to the student, parent, and teacher, and gives a flexibility to make individual, to supplement individual student needs with very targeted and rapid responses.
Is that in your, that's not in the mission and vision section, correct?
Yes, yes, that is, in the mission and vision.
It says, okay, because what I'm looking at, and it's the executive summary of the mission and vision. That said, I personally, and this is just me, this one person speaking, don't believe a mission and vision typically do provide that level of detail. That's, it is late, I know for sure it's later in the application. So I do think that that is a little bit of a harsh criticism when we're looking at mission and vision, because those are kind of like a broad overview of what you're looking to achieve. And I think that I personally believe your mission and vision is clear there for what you're looking to achieve. The specifics come later in the application.
As always, I mean, we're just responding to what was put forward in that initial evaluation. So when we move forward to the educational program and capacity, it demonstrates, I mean, a lot of strengths, okay? And it comes in, it falls significantly short in addressing key educational challenges and equity goals outlined in Louisiana's academic plans. It identifies persistent achievement gaps among economically disadvantaged students, English learners, students with disabilities, and strategies proposed to close these gaps like specificity depth and, you know, measurable outcomes, and it keeps on going through there. You know, a lot of that is things that are already in place at Neville. I mean, they'll be continued, but also supplemented with additional interventions where identified by data. You know, the response in the vision, the RTI at the school level, will continue to operate as a three-tiered approach to the student deficiencies as designed by the LDOE, universal screening, start readings, start math, three thousand titles are all examples of this, are used to screen students into those appropriate instructional tiers. For the ESL students, the Neville Charter will continue to use the ELPTD screening and use that additional personnel budgeted for that to help with the disparity of number of students as opposed to the personnel currently assigned to meet the needs of that growing student population. Again, we mentioned Lexia, that research-based remediation platform. It shows significant gains with Louisiana students, as referenced in their own research materials. The oversight of all these programs will follow, will follow to various members of our instructional leadership team that will be developed as part of this charter application at the school. But it can include, but not be limited to administration, counselors, outside contract interventionists, and lead teachers that are already on campus that possess the decades of experience and expertise working with these students from Neville High School. Once that Type Three application would be approved, the instructional leadership team and the administration of Neville are ready to rapidly respond to those final touches of that portion, of that framework, and that we've developed to address those needs. That's our formal response. I think, I believe everybody else has gotten a copy of this response. I submitted that last week prior to that February meeting. You know, it also went on to say, only, you know, on the tier-one curriculums, they're approved by the Louisiana Department of Education, right? And they have such differentiated instruction scaffolding support to data-driven practices that are built into the individual curriculums. The addition of heavy reliance on the data and targeted instruction diagnosed with that supportive Lexi learning will allow for that immediate formative assessment and strategies created for each student individually. And I would ask anybody if I start going off, because, you know. I have, that's why we also have people like Joe King and Ms. Corey and everybody else that have been involved with the deal of this application. So that's where, that's through that piece of this.
Stuart, I did want to, because she said you didn't see the updated review, I do just want to mention that under organizational and financial plan, Dr. Williams states this section meets criteria. So I think the initial, the initial one said it did not, but she has, after reviewing...
That's right.
Maybe.
I think she, upon our response, she, she kind of reversed her position.
All right.
So we'll get through that. That's federal financial regulations. The community enrollment part of things, we'll move on there. I think we're getting close to the end of this. Says the application contains significant deficiencies in its enrollment policies, including incomplete explanation of how attended zones will be utilized, how lottery system will function, and what priority admissions be granted to specific groups such as siblings or legacy students. Additionally, there's no legal justification provided for the school's intent to enroll students from outside Monroe, raising questions about compliance with state regulations. As we stated in our application, we'll make no change with current admission requirements for Neville High School. We have no intention to change the school zones that have already been instituted by this school board and the school system. Anybody that resides within that school zone is admitted. So that's no question. No questions asked, okay? And if you're a current student, whether you reside within the school zone or not, you will be admitted into the charter upon that date. Siblings of current students, siblings of these students right there, are all allowed to do that. Same applies to siblings or, not siblings, but children of teachers, everything. The same rules have been in place right there. There's no intent or intention to change that whatsoever, unequivocal in the school. That will be based on our capacity as defined. We see it around the, you know, right now we're at, what, thousand twenty-seven, thousand thirty, roughly. We think that the max probably capacity at Neville High School based on, is around, say, eleven hundred. We have no problem with the current, I guess, number of students. The covered enrolled students right there. But in the event that we can't meet that minimum number as required and as shown in our budgetary figures, we're going to open that up. First group of students that will be, will have opportunity for entry will be from the city of Monroe, exclusive.
What page is that plan on in the application?
On the application?
Fine, I'm going to switch how we spot here.
I think Joe's rapidly going through our application.
Madam President, can I say something?
Sure.
So just for clarification purposes, and we'll just use round numbers. Let's say eleven hundred, or let's say a thousand is eleven. And let's say there are nine hundred and fifty students within the district that would qualify for going to Neville, and go to Neville. So that would open it up to fifty students that are outside of Neville's existing district, but yet in the Monroe City school system, correct?
That would be our first method of, to fill the available spots.
Right, and then it's filled with those students, that's it.
That's it.
Gotcha.
That's it. And in the event there are other, I mean, there's still capacity and...
Let's say ten are left over after that second living test.
Yeah, then we could go to the parish or outside of the school. That's defining the charter law. But we can determine the priority of, I guess, the priority of admission. And that's what we intend to do. I mean, at no point ever in this process have we tried to deviate from the current makeup of Neville High School, in order to intend to change any of that. Right? So that, I think that covers that, unless there's any other questions.
Okay, yeah, and I just, I didn't see in the application where that plan for enrollment and for open spots or recruitment of maybe other, you know, priority to Monroe City students versus parish students. I didn't see where that fell, but again, we got it. And while they're looking on that, too, one of the other acknowledgements of the application is that there's a lack of detailed framework for subgroup disparities. Do you, I mean, have you identified subgroups and how we're going to address through the charter?
Subgroup disparities, can you explain what you mean by that?
Well, and I guess that's the problem, is that making sure that we understand that there are many different groups who fall in categories of traditional lack of equity, lack of equality through history that has resulted in some inequity.
Well, I think maybe in subgroups, you might be referring to maybe disabled population through Neville High School, or students with disabilities on it. I mean, we have no intention of taking those opportunities away from the students within the city of Monroe or the males who have actually, we're trying to expand the opportunities for those students, for parents of those students, and be able to provide additional services by partnering with organizations outside of this school district that specifically...
Is that one of those types of, is that a reference to special needs children?
No, I mean, subgroups go beyond some of the, you know, when we talk about groups that historically through our history in the United States suffered from unequal treatment, it goes from LGBTQ population. The easiest one to identify are Black Americans, but also many other minoritized groups, Latinos, Asian-Americans, so there's a whole host. Plus, you did mention English as a separate language. Of course, those that suffered not only from physical disabilities or cognitive disabilities, but also from mental health disability. So, I mean, there's a ton of subgroups.
Well, you mentioned blacks. Neville has the second-largest enrollment of Black students in the Monroe City school system.
Yes, and, you know, we talk about disparities maybe within subgroups, and this is just, we're talking right now, I believe, roughly, the population of Neville High School is roughly at fifty-four, fifty-five percent. Black population, thirty-five-ish percent white population, and then about ten percent, I hate to say other, but I mean, the, from Latino to Asian, Indian, you know, other ethnicities that are already there.
Well, it's important to recognize, too, I mean, you can go to one school in Watchstop Parish, which is predominantly Latino now. We're seeing an influx of Latinos, and so that's why it's really important to identify subgroups and how you're going to make sure as a charter, you're going to stay attuned to what else is out there, but how they, those groups, those subgroups make a specialty.
There already is someone who's employed by the district that is basically assigned to Neville and a couple of schools to address that. To this point, that subgrup, especially the Latino subgroups, non-English-speaking students, hasn't risen to the point of where it's outside of the capacity that we already were able to handle. The one good thing about having the charter in this would be if that were to rise at a rapid pace, we'd be able to rapidly respond to that. And we're definitely prepared to do so. Question, okay, enrollment deal, question thirty-three, on page forty-one. And it just states that we plan to make no change with currently applied admission departments in the Monroe City school system. Our main goal is reinstate, to improve the level of excellence. And then we talk about the advent of a declining student population, how we would go about that second admission option.
And so you give priority to other students within Monroe City schools first under random lottery, and then after that, you move to opening slots.
That's right.
Okay, great, thank you. Appreciate that. I know it's a lot of information, so I appreciate you finding that point. All right, did you get through the, all the sections you wanted to?
I mean, there, I believe there's two more here. One, specifically, the application lacks that comprehensive facility maintenance plan that should build as long-term safety, usability, compliance with health and safety standards. I believe everyone on this board is fairly aware of the affection that that building has with so many of its former students and everything else. It's not required on that application, who'd be responsible for that? But we have stated that oversight will be taken care of, and that building will be maintained to its utmost, to our utmost ability. There's plenty of ways from either capital outlays, there are plenty of options that are available to charter schools such as this one, to respond to any larger needs. But throughout our budget, if you can see there on the end, based on year one, we start basically building a general fund. And we include as lines, basic required maintenance, as everything else, within that budget. But at the end, we start that general fund, so you can use that, it's basically the same way as the current school board uses their general fund to do their capital improvements throughout the district.
Tell me, what is your total amount allotted in year one for facility maintenance and improvements?
I don't think we have that in our budget or budget. Yeah, we'll address that.
Okay.
Wait a second, let me see. Did I see you with the...
Yeah, who, where did this come from?
This came from yours.
Yeah, that was, I was up there. I mean, I just haven't had a chance to, what was the question?
What the first year allotted amount for the old facility maintenance improvements? I think it's second page, last category, but maybe incorrect. I just want to make sure I'm on that right on that.
Yeah, I stated a Holiday Inn Express, but... Yeah, I stated a Holiday Inn Express, but, uh...
I mean, we work in five and a half years.
Well, I just haven't had a chance to look at the numbers, okay, no, where, okay, uh, so equipment purchase? It's, uh, eight hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Okay.
Oh, I'm looking for that. Where, which, uh...
Is it under purchased property services?
Okay, I got you, I got you, I got you, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I defer to the contractor next to me, that's office repairs and maintenance services.
Okay.
And it does look out of the ordinary, I mean...
Mr. Moore, do you know, often, how much we're spending yearly at Neville, more building, um, maintenance improvement, no, okay.
We, we give advice to the board.
And we base, we base our, our budgetary stuff based on the numbers that were provided to us by the, uh, school system, you know, I mean, so, I mean, they're within the, uh, the averages, I mean, we had three-year, uh, rolling average that's going through there. Um, so, that, that's the way we base our, um, financial projections, yeah.
Thank you.
For example, we, we have a bat abatement that, uh, can't, can't predict for that.
There's a lot of bats in Neville, I don't know if y'all got up there tonight, but, uh, the tower.
A bat abatement?
There was bats in the, uh...
Yes, and bats in the Belfry?
They were in, they were in the, uh, basketball, you know, it was kinda interesting to go in there, bats were buzzing, did you go in there?
I don't think so.
You did go? It was, it was, that was an interesting day. Uh, I think, uh, that, that was, it was a lot, but they have been abated, the bats have been, so that's good. Well, I haven't seen them play.
Really?
They're playing basketball, I haven't seen anybody run out to, run out to, uh... Yeah, hopefully, they've been well today.
And it was trapped.
I can't remember how it went down.
Yeah, and it was a humane release, oh, I didn't know.
That's right, yeah.
They're out there somewhere eating...
The ones that are, that are inside, it's ski masks.
Yeah, that's, okay, anyway, I digress, so...
So, you know, um, basically, it's our ideal, it's, it's, it's this, and, you know, we've seen this, and, and as any independent evaluation, uh, goes, you know, we feel like, I could get five evaluations if they were my way, I could get five evaluations if they weren't my way. And I'm not discrediting what Dr. Williams has done, I believe she's been, in fact, I mean, uh, she did her thorough job and has her opinion, has a very right opinion, we just tend to disagree, uh, that we know the work that we've put into this and the preparations that we've done. We've chosen to partner with people like Four Sector Solutions, who have a longstanding, uh, history, uh, and track record, a successful track record, uh, to provide, uh, the financial accountability services that, uh, we will need to go and do this. We didn't go, come to this, uh, decision lightly, and, and we're very, and we're prepared to, uh, maintain that relationship and learn from people like Joe, uh, and his team at Four Sector, uh, to, you know, be able to maintain that accountability, uh, throughout this venture, okay? And now that we're at the end of this, I, I do, um, just have a, a basic, just a little statement here to finish, if that's all right, unless y'all have any more questions for me, yes?
I do, if you don't mind, Madam President. Uh, so, quick question, um, going back to the twenty-twelve application, I believe Fourth Sector, uh...
Yeah, Joe was here.
And Joe, were you?
Yeah, I was there.
Okay, all right, well, I know you've got a long service to the school system, especially from a CFO position standpoint.
Right.
And then, uh, a principal position standpoint. Um, so, is my understanding, Wes Martin, I believe, was the one that, uh, did the application, uh, twelve years ago, I spoke with Wes this week and did a little due diligence. Wes was very impressed with this application, um, but this application, I think the response, um, opportunity was a lot smaller from a page standpoint, is that correct, than what was done twelve years ago? That was my understanding.
Yeah, there, I think there was a sixty-five page on it.
Right, um, and, um, it was, I, I believe, and Ms. Cruster, you can answer this one in the audience, was, uh, Dr. Harris, uh, superintendent then, in twenty-twelve?
Yes.
Yes?
That's when we started a secret unit search shortly after that.
And so, um, it was my understanding, she was for the Neville Charter application process, um, and I don't know if we can say the same about our superintendent now, if I could put words in his mouth, but, um, the question, couple of questions I had, as it pertains to trying to get that rising tide of lift all ships and trying to increase performance, especially with our lower performing students, oh, I don't believe Lexia existed twelve years ago?
No.
And that's, that's kind of a major, uh, process program to help especially, I think, our low performing students, um, and, uh, my wife teaches special education and then she has to come home to me, and, uh, pray for her, uh, but, uh, but, but Lexia is, is really, um, a tremendous...
Is this a question or a testimony?
It's a question. Uh, Lexia didn't exist, it was March Two success around then, at that, I think it was. So my question is, I found it kind of interesting how twenty-twelve, and she's not here to answer the question, Dr. Williams was for Neville Charter's application, and yet we've had these advances to help address some of the areas, I think in her review said, were somewhat lacking, but yet that wasn't mentioned back in the twenty-twelve application, so I just was kind of bewildered as to that.
I don't, I, I can't answer that, I mean, I, I wasn't involved in the, uh, I say I wasn't involved, uh, I was closely monitoring things back in twenty-twelve, um, as were a lot of people, and, um, we're thirteen year, you know, twelve, thirteen years from, from now, it's definitely, um, a different time, and, uh, we, but the, the, the mission and vision of what we're trying to do is basically remains the same, okay? We're trying to provide an opportunity for all students that are within the walls of Neville High School, and really, uh, we'll profit all students within, uh, the Monroe City School System, the opportunity to have an alternative to maybe a traditional, uh, system model, okay? This is all this is, this is something that brings things to the site and allows the, the, that site-based oversight to be able to rapidly respond and, and do the things that we believe need to be, need to be done, uh, within the walls of Neville High School. Uh, I know, I believe, and, and the members of our board believe that this type of, um, educational plan or educational model, uh, we've seen it, it's been successful in many other places, all right? Are there, there areas where, you know, a lot of the things that have been said about this, especially early on, um, and throughout, are, are basically kind of anecdotal, uh, things that could be said about charter schools? Are some of those things true? Of, of course they are, you know, um, that's not our intent, okay?
What, I'm sorry, I'm, you lost me there, what do you mean? You said some of those things are true, what things?
Well, like, and like, based on, I've heard a lot of different oppositions to this since we, we started this, you know, that we're gonna make Neville a, a, an all-white school, we're gonna charge admission, we're gonna make people wear uniforms, we're gonna do all of this types of things, okay? In some scenarios, that's happened to school districts, type one charters are, are one of those, uh, methods that have done it. You see it in Delhi, uh, with Del, I mean, Delhi Charter, you can see it maybe in, in Plonville, you know, with, uh, Darbonne, Darbonne Woods, uh, you've seen successful woods, kinda like the Downsley Charter that Tommy Kane has, that there was a, a conversion, right? I mean, and, so, you've seen conversions in inner city of New Orleans, Post Petri, that's basically a, a charter, I mean, it's a recovery school district, but you see the success of, uh, Warren Eastons, the Head and Cards, all that stuff. So, it does work, okay? Uh, when the right people are, are involved in this, and when it's maintained, uh, this, Neville High School has a history, a longstanding history of success, all right? And the, and I was talking with, um, someone today, uh, at Neville High School, we started dealing with that, that history, all right? I consider Neville High School's history to start basically in the, you know, seventies, okay? Basically, we did, went through integration through here, all right, the last fifty years. And I've seen the successful, uh, sometimes hard, but the successful integration of, of public school experience. I've witnessed that. We had the opportunity as young children to, to do a, what some people call the white flight. We could go to River Oaks in, in, in the eighties, you could see that, the, the institution, that's when Brooks first, okay? My parents chose to stay here, my grandfather was part of this, but it wasn't just my parents, it was, uh, parents from people in our community, people that I went to school with. And I went to Lexington, I went to JS Park, you know, to now Neville Junior High School, I went to Neville High School. I've got friends that I met along the way that I've, that I would have never met, played a lot of ball, went to a lot of class, shared a lot of heartaches with a lot of these people. And from that, we have one of the most, uh, this school that, that is Neville High School, that's what is near and dear to me. In the past fifty years, we've overcome a lot of challenges. Are there still more challenges to, to do? Yes, yes, there are. But, um, all we want is to make Neville High School to continue and uplift Neville to even higher standards, utilizing every member that walks through the halls of Neville High School, no matter where they're from, whether from the north side or the south side, or as I said, the east side, or the west side.
Not the opposite.
But, uh, superintendent more, but to, to my point is this, I want Neville High School to have the best athletics we can possibly have, I want Neville High School to have the best academics we can possibly have. I want Neville High School to be able to afford, uh, the support to the teachers by adding the appropriate administration at the school site level to allow them to have the autonomy to teach kids like they feel they need to be taught, to address the areas that need to be addressed, whatever those areas may be, and be nimble enough to make changes, sometimes midstream. I want Neville to have the best band that we can possibly have, I want Neville to have the best performing arts that we poss, that we can possibly have. And like Dr. Dawson, um, always said, and this is something that, that goes through everything, and Neville, they say, you know, win, you know, wins a day, win everything. And Dr. Dawson was, I, I talked to her early on in this process, and I, I've always talked to Dr. Dawson, and she was one of my favorites when I was at Neville, um, and she continues to, to be one of my favorite people, but her attitude was, I wanna win everything, everything we do, we're doing it at Neville, we wanna win, and that's, that's our goal. And, uh, we feel that, and, and I feel strongly, and we as a board feel strongly about this, that this alternative, uh, form of governance for our school, uh, can only be enhanced by a strong partnership with the Monroe City School System. We don't want to have to take steps past this. We want to be able to show that this, this system or, or our plan can be implemented, not only at Neville High School, but, I mean, throughout schools, uh, throughout the district. And, uh, and that includes getting people, uh, maybe, could be, that are good people, that are running the halls here at Central Office, back into the school sites, and helping out and doing the things that they're doing here, but being able to focus a lot of those intentions. I'll be happy, I'll be the first one to step up to help do this, but I think this is a true partnership opportunity for both Monroe City Schools to do something that hasn't, hasn't rarely if ever been done within the state of Louisiana. And, um, that is our intention, is to partner. We want to do, is with the successful approval of this, uh, type three application, we want to do a shared services contract.
Okay, Mr. Shelby, I'm gonna ask you to kind of wrap up here.
Okay, but anyway, I, I have this, I mean, we, that's our full intention, and what I don't want is for the members that we see here today to force us to go to the next step, because we're willing to do that. We feel such, such strongly that this is, uh, the, the way of a new world in education, that we're prepared to do that. But we want to be able to do it, well, partnering with the Monroe City Schools, and, uh, we hope that you give us that opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Shelby, I appreciate your passion, and, um, I, I appreciate you providing that context, um, I, I don't, I know, I personally don't have any question about your commitment to Neville High School, um, and what you're trying to do, so I appreciate you taking time to speak with us. Um, all right, before we move on to three A, uh, I want to ask, um, Mr. Noah?
Thanks.
Are you here?
Just moved.
Can you come up, um, and, uh, join us up here? Uh, Mr. Noah was invited, um, John, I reached out to John Geis because I just wanted to make sure we had as much legal expertise, I asked Mr. Lawrence if that would be acceptable, and so, uh, Mr. Noah's here representing, um, Geis' firm to also just assist with any kind of legal questions. You may have a very boring job tonight, sir, I don't know, but just wanted to make sure we had, um, best legal lines in Monroe here, yes, right there.
Thanks, Lawrence, I asked you to...
Great. Okay, thank you so much for joining us, okay. So, um, on our, uh, next item, um, again, thank you for that presentation, um, from the Neville Charter Association, um, so we're moving on to three A, uh, it's, uh, two A was just a presentation. Um, this agenda item is action on Neville Charter Association application requesting approval to convert Neville High School into a type three charter school. We have several motions to speak before the, not motions, I apologize, uh, request to speak. Before I call on them, would we like a motion and a second on three A? Do I have a motion?
I say move.
What are you moving?
Uh, for the action on the Neville Charter application.
What's the action you're...
Association for discussion and then later vote.
It's, uh, so you need to, uh, make a motion on that, so do you want to make a motion to approve the Neville Charter, and then we will discuss before voting?
We'd like to make that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion from Mr. Wilson, and a second from, um, Michael Sampanera. Okay, four member discussion, four members, any discussion you would like to...
Uh, I would like to reserve my comments until after the public has a chance to ask their questions, if possible.
Yes. Okay, um, that being said, I'm going to call, okay, so the individuals that we call up here have three minutes, um, typically, while you may ask questions of the board, the board typically is not in the position to answer them, um, and I do want to acknowledge the one Neville student that I see in the audience who unfortunately has to go drive her brother to a, uh, soccer event, um, but thank you for Neville High School student representation, that's my daughter, Madam. Um, she may be back, not after her, probably. Okay, but so you have three minutes, um, to come up and make your statement. I do ask for those of you who are in attendance to provide respect to those of, uh, individuals who are speaking, whether they be, um, representatives from the community, schools, or board members when they're speaking, um, and I'm asking Officer if there are any outbursts, if you would please escort people out of the room if they cannot maintain decorum, okay? So that said, I'm sure we're, we're all capable of maintaining that decorum, I'm going to invite, uh, Mr. Gary Roberts to come up here, uh, and, um, provide your input.
I, um, spoke to the board last month, uh...
I spoke to the board last month. It's good to see y'all. And explain some of my reason behind the charter. I know a couple of us have talked individually all the time. I also want to tell Stuart and the charter board how much I appreciate their effort because this was a massive undertaking. And one thing I know about Neville is that we will try to do things the right way. And I think you know, like I know, that everyone's heart's in the right place. We've all tried to do the best we could do with this. But I did want to say a couple of things that I want in closing. I know that a lot of these decisions were made behind the scenes before we ever get into this board group. I know how things work. I've been around long enough as a teacher and coach and parent to understand that. But I've got over 1,000 names right here of community members who support Neville Charter. These are parents, grandparents, including myself, who all have kids in the system, or coming up through the system. It's very important to them.
Can I see them?
I was told not to give out this list, because there's no one to warn.
Okay.
But in response, I understand the difficulty you have making these calls. I get that. I know we're torn between a lot of things. I know we were also required to have a teacher vote. And 74% of the faculty approved going charter. Now, I know Ms. Cooper, and I know Ms. Shelly both taught school, as I do. When your, the majority of your faculty ask for the opportunity to have a little more say in what they're doing, I think we maybe need to listen. Those people in that building up there on 604th Side have over 1,000 years of high school experience. I know several teachers like Ms. Tucker, Mr. Rogers, they've been there longer than I've been a lot. I'm just, I'm just concerned that we, we're not looking at it the way we should. And I get it, everybody has a vote, and you can say, we can talk about the parent vote, we can talk about that. But you know and I know that the parent vote is a revocable door. Those parents are there for four years. I've had plenty of parents who supported our athletic program, and then four years from there, after that, their kids are out there, guess what? I don't see them. And that's okay. I understand. But understand that we've got some difficult decisions to make. You have some difficult decisions to make. I just hope that you'll consider approving this charter.
Thank you.
You know, these people will do the best they can do. And all is in your court. It's going to have a long term impact. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Weaver?
Mr. Shelby, very well covered what I was wanting to make a statement about. And it concerns implications that have been made out in the community on social media, that this is a racial issue. I can tell you 100% it is not. When we started, when we restarted the charter application, never once was that a question. We've stated it in our application, we have stated it over and over and over. If you're a Neville student now, you'll be a Neville student when we charter. If you live in the Neville Zone now, you will be a Neville student when we charter. Neville embraces their diversity. We have all colors, creeds, nationalities, religions, and we are an A school. There's not many high schools in the state that can say that. And we want to remain an A school. And we think, as part of this charter board, we truly feel that going charter is the way to maintain that status. And it's not going to change because it's not who we are. We're not going to do that. We've been diverse for a long time, and we want to stay that way. And I hope that you all will listen to us and please consider what we're saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Weaver.
Good evening.
Evening.
Mr. Moore. Presenting the board and board members. I do a lot of praying in my time, and I was praying this morning, and I turned up with my own mind set. As I knelt in prayer this morning, I asked our Lord for His guidance. We are at a very important crossroads. I ask you to thoroughly examine your conscience and do the best thing for our children and our community. You've been thoroughly informed of the true consequences of your decision tonight. As someone who hangs on tightly to history, it is time to move forward. The granting of your positive vote will be a landmark towards the future of our school system and our city. For the true good of all, I sincerely plead that you vote wisely for the proposed Neville Charter. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jefferson. Derek Kennedy?
Evening. Evening. Warren, how you doing, sir? My father was on the school board back in the '60s. I had three older brothers that attended Neville. I had two older children that graduated Neville. I've got a 14-year-old, believe it or not, that is at Neville or cheerleader now. Stuart Shelby's statement about hard decisions, this is not a hard decision. This is a positive decision. Let us remember, people move to communities because of the school system, not because of the city government, but they will uplift their entire family to move because this has got a great school system. Mr. Moore, when you were vying for superintendent, I was down there listening to your call. And one of the things Mr. Moore kept saying is, "We want what Neville has." Everybody does. Let's continue that. This is an opportunity for us to continue. This is, this is not a agreement or disagreement. This is a chance to move Neville forward. Having, what Mr. Shelby said, a rapid response team, so to speak, on Neville's campus if something comes awry, that's important. And with what we have going on economically 20 miles to the east from here, and we make this move, and these people we have moving in with those kinds of jobs, guess what? They're going to want what Neville has. And that's going to enable us to do it. So please consider voting for the charter school. It is going to set us apart, which is what we want to do, and continue the great tradition that Neville has. I appreciate you listening and hope everything goes well. Thank you.
Bishop Padcomis?
You can have the president's school board minutes today as our president, as well as my brothers and sisters and brothers. The organizers have made my case for me. I had a long spiel to get up and make a point of this. But I mean, that is a perfect charter plan that they have. They have summarized it, they have explained it in great detail. But the summary of that explanation is that nothing wrong with Neville. Even the audience that has come up said Neville is a perfect school, A+. We find no problem with it. The gentleman that was explaining during the summary on behalf of the organizers stated that, "We don't have a problem. We're going to keep the student ratio, we're going to keep the zone, we're going to keep everything Neville has. Only thing we desire is let us run it." So my thing is, if it's good and we're having the 20-mile plant that's coming and they're going to want the best school, A+ is the best that you can get in a school. Neville is our most prestigious school. We don't want to let Neville go. If we had a chat to say, we'll say, "No, no, Neville can't go." Because all of our kids deserve the best. He could stand up here, as the organizers can stand up here, as he did, and said that the evaluator could skew things based on who did who hired him. And the allegations and threats and intimidation, this is going to have a long-term effect if you don't vote this way. This is going to come back to get, you know, those are not the reasons that you guys should vote. You should vote what's good for our kids. And it has nothing been said tonight from this, from the organizers that would make you think that Neville needs anything but their support. If you're going to invest all this mental help and bring all these resources to Neville about being a charter school, why can you not bring that right now as Neville currently stands? If I got a car that's got a flat, I'm not going to go to car, we don't fix the flat. They have identified the problems at Neville as they see them. Why not come in now and join with the team that's already here? And this may make Neville even better than what it is. But their whole argument is, we just want to make it better. We'll put the staff that's in the offices now back in the schools. Let's just invest all that effort and energy that we're doing to try to turn it into a charter school, and let's just continue to help the Neville as it is, as we know it to be. And that's our most premier school in the district. We say vote no, don't let Neville go. And if there's any improvements, which based on the organizers, there are none because it's whole summer, but everything is fine at Neville, we just want to run it. So we ask you to vote no on that for the kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Bishop. And I did want to acknowledge you are current president of the Neville ACP chapter in our region. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, board members. Mr. Wilson?
I'd like to go last, if possible.
Mr. Sampanera, does you have any comments?
I don't have any comments, I'm going to stand up.
Thank you. Mr. Bush? Michelle? All right.
That was easy. First of all, I'd like to thank everybody here in attendance. This is obviously something that's very important to the vast majority of people here, probably everyone here to some degree. Bishop, I appreciate your comments you just made. And I know they came from your heart. And the presentation tonight was very positive. But there's some things that, behind the scenes, and we'll get into it just a little bit later, to talk about that may not be quite as positive, and I want to kind of explain that later. But like myself and Michael Sampanera, we both grew up here. We went to public schools here, went to Carroll, graduated from Neville. Our kids have gone to Neville. Both of our wives are teachers, and my wife has been a teacher almost 25 years in the system. And we love Monroe City Schools. Our boys graduated from Neville, and we're in Monroe City Schools as well. And we're all in for the school system. We're also all in for Neville High School. We talked about the charter in 2012, and there were some things that occurred then that changed. At the time, Brent Padre was principal at Neville, and there were concerns as to the direction that Neville was going. And then all of a sudden, Dr. Padre, Brent Padre became superintendent, and that charter initiative kind of fell by the wayside, diving the vine, you could say. And you need to get that? Thank you. So now we fast forward to 23, 24, and now 2025. And over the last couple of years, there's been some things that have occurred. I can go into different wants and needs that Neville has requested that over the last couple of years have not received, not major, but some things.
Can you be specific?
Yes, I can get into everything from the standpoint of maintenance of the grounds. Neville High School has to pay for a whole different crew that maintains the grounds at Neville. I can talk about whenever Neville, from an athletic standpoint, goes out of town for a game, playoff game, state championship, what have you, through the years, instead of the system paying for all the travel, the Neville alumni have had to pay for that, or the supporters of cheer groups, what have you, things of that nature.
But the system pays for the other two high schools?
Yes, in those respects, okay? So again, those aren't major things, but those are little factors. The major thing that was really driving this force was, we want to lift, get the rising tide to lift all the ships. And you indicated that Neville's an A-plus school. So you may not be aware, Bishop, that we're going to a new grading system. In fact, I talked to Dr. K. Brumley, who everyone on this board, I think, knows today. I'll get into that in just a second. But it's estimated that 80% of the schools, K through 12, will see at least a one-letter grade decline in their academic ratings. Currently, if you took the last two-year scores of Neville, and they've been declining still at A rated school, but you apply them into the new rating system, Neville would be a B today. And so, Ms. Susan Weaver talked about wanting to keep Neville an A. We want to do that. How's that going to happen? Lexia has been mentioned a lot. And Lexia is great with working with students that may be low performing, that we want to raise, again, rising tide lifting all the ships, their academic outcomes. The same for March 2 Success, ACT/SAT related, grades 8 through 12, and in fact goes into college. But that's another application that we can apply to help our lower-performing students increase. And that is the biggest area of gains that Neville High School looks to make in. Because our top students are going to always be top students, whether they're at Carroll, Wauston, or Neville. But it's those low-performing students that we really want to focus in and get them. So you mentioned all about the kids. It is all about the kids. It's all about black kids, the white kids, and whatever color, creed, what have you. We are all in. In fact, I mentioned that Neville was the second-largest black school in terms of student population. Yes, it is, in Monroe City School System. Carroll's number three, Wauston's number one. And you tell people that, and I see people nodding, knowing we looked at the scores and numbers, and that's the case. So when you tell people that, you're like, "What?" Neville is also the highest-rated majority-black school in the state of Louisiana from an academic standpoint. And you say, "Well, that's a great thing." And it is. But we can get so much better, so much better. One of the ramifications between a Charter III and a Charter II, and I think a number of people kind of are aware of this here, but there's some that are not. We are hoping that Neville would be voted in to go Charter II this evening. And if that happens, the Monroe City Schools, I'm sorry, Type III. Type III, thank you. Type III charter. And if that happens, our school system needs to keep Neville's grades. Right now, Neville's overall, excuse me, the system's overall grade is a high C. Ran the numbers, and if Neville's grades are taken out, which will happen once they go to Charter II through the Vessi Board, and that's going to happen if it's voted down tonight, we're going to lose Neville's grades. And that's going to take us from a high C to a low C in the 65 range. 60 to 74.5 is the C range, right? So that's not good. Number two, with the more rigorous grading system we're about to go into, if we start at a low C, that's going to drop down definitely to a D, potentially, potentially, a high F. And God forbid, if our system is a high F, now it's got to be remediated by the state of Louisiana. We don't want that to happen. Again, that's why we want the Type III charter for Neville in our school system. Geography, we mentioned, that's not going to change. But in talking to Dr. Brumley today, he was bewildered why we, as a school system, wouldn't unanimously approve the Type III charter. It's like you said, "Well, Bill, you go Type II, and not only does the school system lose your scores, they can redefine the geographic destination of where the students come from." In other words, they could open it up to all students in the state of Louisiana theoretically under a Type II charter. Again, we don't want to have to do that. We, I mentioned, again, a conversation with Dr. Brumley was very enlightening. And I wasn't aware of the Type II situation, where you could change the geographic boundaries. I didn't know that. The Gator Scholarship Program, I don't know if everybody's here familiar with that, but that is a, I knew you would be, Ms. Gretzer. That is a scholarship program that is going into effect this coming September. Okay, Bill, what does that mean? Well, students that are in public schools can now go into private schools and have $7,200 of their, that's the minimum, of their tuition paid for. We've seen estimates that between 25 to 100 students that are either in or in the process of going to Neville, we would lose because of them going to a private school if we don't go charter. You're looking at $250,000 to $1 million in lost revenue. Now, look, you can't put a price on a child, we know that. But for an economic standpoint, which is important when you're running a school... But for an economic standpoint, which is important when you're running a school system, each child in the Monroe City School System brings in roughly $10,000 when you include MFP, when you include Advalorm taxes, and when you include sales taxes. So this Gator program is a very important factor we need to factor in. And the vast majority of these students are the higher performing academic students. Again, hurting our school system and the scores by losing them to private schools. Again, I mentioned focusing on lower performing students, Lexia, March to Success. Something Mr. Shelley didn't have a chance to really talk about much was the Jump Start Program. Jump Start Program, not every child is ready or wants to attend a four-year university. And we know friends out there that had gone in and majored in a certain major they never used, they come out with student debt, and they think, man, I wish I'd become an electrician, a plumber, a welder. Again, Mrs. Weaver, you know, represents, she's the owner of James Machine Works, thank you, the brain freeze, sorry about that. James the Machine Works, one of our largest employers in our area. In fact, they help provide welders at Neville High School in that Jump Start Program. Again, this community is coming into effect. But we're trying to put a greater emphasis on those students that don't necessarily want to go to a four-year degree and want to have a job, or at least an apprenticeship for a job when they get out, and make some serious money and love what they do, right? Another thing is with the new grading system, and I don't think a lot of folks here in the audience is going to be aware of this, but if you have an ROTC program, and your student that graduates high school through the program goes into the military under the new system, the high school gets credit points for that. We haven't had an ROTC for three years. We'd like to get our ROTC program back. I believe it's Navy program, ROTC program, yeah. So that's another factor that wasn't talked about, but it's important. Career certification training, discuss that, economic consequences. So I got with the assessor's office and wanted to see what the numbers and the impact would be to our system. Now, it's going to be estimated that we lose between $2 to $3 million in net revenue to the Monroe City School System if Neville goes charter, or should I say when Neville goes charter? Okay? So how are you going to replace that? In the last 40 years, we have never had a better opportunity to replace that. What do you mean, Bill? What do you mean? Well, this last year in North Monroe, who, raise your hand if your property got reassessed? And raise your hand if that increased? And raise your hand if it increased between 10 and 40%? Okay. This is huge. Now, Advalorm isn't just personal real estate, it's commercial real estate, it's also inventory for like an automobile dealership. That gets taxed, and that goes into the Advalorm tax. But the vast majority are personal residences in the town. Our Advalorm tax, so this last year, 15,800,000 went to the Monroe City School System through Advalorm taxes. This next year, a $700,000 increase of 16,500 would go into play. This doesn't even take into effect Meta. In the year 2025, an increase of 948,000, 16,748. 2026, 1,199,000, might as well say 1.2 million. Goes into right at 17 million in Advalorm. 2027, 17,254, an increase of 1,454. In 2028, 17,513,000, an increase of 1,713,000. That's going to increase into the coffers of the Monroe City School System. When you talk about sales taxes, we've all heard about the Meta plant, right? It's going to be just on the east side of Rabel and Holly Bridge. That's going to have a huge impact, it's going to impact home sales, which will increase Advalorm taxes. This also is going to increase sales taxes. I don't think everybody working at Meta, those 3,000 to 5,000 people over the next five years are going to all live and shop in Rabel. I think a lot are going to come to the city of Monroe. And so we're looking at reasonably an increase in the sales taxes of between 10 to 20% over the next five years. This equates to approximately a $500,000 increase to the coffers. I'm making a point, and so this is very important.
You're predicting the future.
No, no, okay, this estimated, estimate, and to your point, you're right, no one knows. But these are conservative estimations, and in my background, I kind of know a little bit about that. The estimates that came from the assessor were one and a half percent increase each year, okay? And every four years, our real estate values are reassessed, okay? And that did not take into account Meta or anybody moving in, so it was conservative. To your point, I get off that. Let's talk about the grades, we mentioned that. We have 18 schools in the Monroe City School System. A little over a year ago, eight of those schools were rated F and D, 4F, 4D. This last year when the grades came out, nine, half of the Monroe City School System was rated F and D. The problem is the F schools went from four to six. O'Neill Shelling Elementary, Claire Hall Elementary, Burr Jones Elementary, Bockford Park Elementary, Jefferson Upper Elementary, and Carroll Junior High, all F. Three were D, Minnie Ruffin Elementary, Carver Elementary, Madison James Foster Elementary. This is important because again, the more rigorous grading scale we're going to, it's going to decrease 80% of those schools, estimated, estimated. And then Neville leaving will bring us down before these new rigorous grading goes into effect from a high C to a low C. Very important fact. We get into our communities, which we all live in the same Monroe community, but there's several communities within the community. And one of the things that drives our community is employment. Again, James Machine Works, Mrs. Weaver's company, huge employer. Mr. Dewey Weaver, the owner of Intermountain Management, just down the road on Tower Drive, the United States' second largest hotel management company. We are so fortunate to have this company here in Monroe. I want to read the letter that he wrote out, and gave to me to read tonight, because he couldn't make it. "To the Monroe City School Board, dated today, January 14. My name is Dewey Weaver, and I'm the owner of Intermountain Management, a local hotel and real estate management company located near the Monroe City School Board Office on Tower Drive. I've been a resident of Monroe, Louisiana for over 43 years. Several of my own children have attended and graduated from Monroe City Schools, and now my grandchildren are enrolled in the Monroe City Schools. As both a resident and a businessman, I realize the importance of public education and the profound impact it has on our local community. Throughout the growth of my business, I've consistently sought to employ local individuals and intend to maintain this practice. In studying the impact of Neville High School's request to become a charter school, I've concluded that this transition will greatly enhance the education of those students attending Neville High School. Charter schools have more flexibility in their current curriculum and teaching methods, which can lead to the innovation, innovative educational approaches and improved student outcomes. I realize that some members of the Monroe City School Board may oppose this request. However, Neville High School is determined to become a charter school whether the Monroe City School Board or through the Bessie Board. The consequences are capitalized dire if you," in parentheses, the Monroe City School Board, "do capitalize not support the request of this Neville, of Neville as a Type III charter. You will be losing the system's only A-rated school and its final scores in school grade. This is an extremely important vote in many aspects for our children, for our community, and for our business community. Please step back and consider the impact, both negative and positive, that your decision will make. Please vote for the Neville High School Charter III request."
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
I'm summing up, one minute, please. How many people in attendance would like for Neville High School to go Type III charter through the Monroe City School System? Raise your hand, please. Can you hold them up, okay? Hold them up. You got a bottle in your hand? All right. I want the board, I want the board to understand Neville's going charter. If we don't approve it tonight, they're going to go to Type II charter. And then after that, they have the option a year later to take two other schools to Type II charter, say like the Lexington or Sally Apple, and then a year after that, potentially another two schools, like Neville Junior High and JS Clark. If that were to happen in three years, three and a half years, this will academically bankrupt the Monroe City School System. It would be an F-rated school system, the state will come into remediation. We don't want to do that. We do not want to do that. We want to go Type III charter for Neville, and that's it? That's it? But if we're voted down tonight, we have no other choice. And so I want everyone to understand the vote and the consequences of that vote, not only short term, but long term. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Hang on one moment, Michelle. There are two items that I want to address, and one is that Mr. Wilson made a statement that Monroe City School Central Office pays for Wasman and Carol, I'm sorry, yes, pays for Wasman and Carol to go to playoff games, but not Neville. Is that true?
I didn't say all Neville, I said portion of the press pay for.
That is a lie.
No, it's not a lie.
It's current standings, Neville, Neville High School, Wasman and Carol, under former Superintendent Brent Padre. It was established that they pay for championship rounds. If you make the championship, they pay for it, not traditional.
How many people are taking a charter for Neville games, playoffs, whatever?
We are trying to establish fact, not you know.
I didn't say the school did not help.
You pay for championship, championship, you make the championships.
So it wasn't.
My second item that I want clarification from our legal experts here. Based on the state sanctioned vote that did not reach a 50% threshold of parents who support this charter application, can the Charter Association still apply for a conversion of Neville to a Bessie Type II without more 50% or more apparent support, parent guardian of existing students at Neville's support?
Ms. Aylon, for clarification, the vote that took place for the parents over finals week was not a yes/no vote.
Okay, Mr. Wilson, you have had your time.
Yeah, I just want to point a clarification.
I am waiting for an answer so that then I can make a point of clarification about this vote and how it's conducted. Yes.
We certainly wish we would, sort of know that we get this question ahead of time.
Okay.
Basically on what I've looked at, I've not seen anything that is prohibitory, talks about, you know, when you look at the outcome of the parent vote or the student vote, that it somehow hamstrings the ability of the organization to seek approval from this board or Bessie.
Okay.
That's my, that's my response right now.
We'll need to look into clarification of that, because when I looked at the charter law, it stated that in order for a charter application to seek conversion, they must meet a minimum of 50% of the parent or guardian approval for that charter application. But I would like clarification from our legal experts, not you, Mr. Wilson.
I'm not giving it.
And not other people in the audience, thank you. So we will, we will get that for future.
May I read this one excerpt?
Yes, please, Mr. Lawrence.
Okay. This is, and let me tell you where I'm reading from, this is Title 17, Section 3983, subsection C, charter, subsection two, charter, two, it says approval by the parents and guardians of pupils attending a pre-existing school opposed to be converted to a charter school requires a favorable vote of the majority of the parents or guardians and pupils enrolled in these schools at the time of the election who are voting, provided the number of votes cast equals at least 50% of the number of pupils. There shall be one vote for each pupil enrolled in the school, which may be cast by one parent or guardian for each pupil. That's the one area where this is addressed.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. I wanted to say, because I know there's been some confusion about the way that the vote was handled. While there was not an opportunity for dissenting votes, the opportunity was for approval of approval votes. And there was no restriction on how the announcement was handled. The Charter Association could have taken out, you know, blimp flyer ads, I don't know. I mean, there's, you know, the announcement was out there, and as you guys know, and as I can say as glibly as I will, and I apologize for this in advance, welcome to American voter turnout and American voter apathy. Neville is very much a reflection of that lack of turnout, from what I understand. But the vote was conducted in accordance with the convention that is formed, that Mr. Wilson, Ms. Cooper, Mr. Shelby, Superintendent Moore, and who else was present, and Attorney Lawrence, they met as a committee to determine how that would proceed, who they would survey, who they would include, and so that's how that was done. So we're going to leave that.
Ms. Aylon, you mentioned my name.
Oh, and Ms. Bryant, pardon me.
And you mentioned my name, and that, so I did want to point out clarification. That vote was done during finals week. This district, the Friday before the Tuesday, Wednesday vote, put it on the website that a vote would exist. Now, the website.
Mr. Wilson, I understand that you.
No, I want the public to understand the vote and how it went down.
You have put that out everywhere.
Excuse me, not everybody has seen that, and everybody's seen that, Ms. Aylon.
Everybody here is part of the support.
No, they haven't, and so you brought my name up, and I'm going to address the vote and how it's handled. It was my understanding that the vote would be a yes vote or no vote. Not a, if I don't vote, that counts as a no. That's unheard of, and that was never brought up in the meeting.
At the board meeting, we discussed.
And, no, we didn't, you weren't there.
Yes, I was.
Excuse me, not at the ad hoc committee meeting.
No, but we discussed the voting procedure that the state has lined out that is only for votes in favor at our board meeting in, what year was that, or November?
November.
November, thank you, sir. So that was the same procedure brought to the committee. But regardless, regardless, the point is, the vote was held according to state procedure. People don't like the outcome of the vote, and so we're arguing and disputing it, but the Charter Association also had the opportunity to be put vote in favor over the course of months, so, and those votes weren't provided. Ms. Shelling, I would like to refer to you now.
I was just, it's okay, I was like, and just to address, and what I want to speak on is not for or against, I just want to speak on some facts, for clarity's sake, that was really raised out there. And the big, one of those big things, and so much of what Mr. Wilson said is correct, so much of it is kind of skewed as well, but just for clarity's sake, just in terms of new accountability system. First and foremost, the new accountability system takes effect the 26, 27 school year. Not this year, not next year, but the following year. And the new accountability system, you get the biggest bang for your pro for moving that bottom 25%. In actuality, elementary schools will benefit positively with moving kids. You use an example of Neville, when they ran the simulation scores, like most high schools throughout the state, the negative impact is going to be on high schools. Period. That's the, that's the way the design is. There are three categories that the state has set up. There's elementary, middle school, that's one category. There's high school, that's another category. And the third category is district performance score. State has it designed this way. Each year, the top 10% throughout the state in those three categories will become an A. The next 20% will be a B. The next 40% would be a C. The next 20% would be a D, and that last 10% would be an A. All right, now Neville High School, based on the simulated scores, would, he's correct, would go from an A to a B. But since you mentioned the South Side Elementary Schools, for example, Madison James Foster, who was pulling the school takeover, with that score, would go from an A to a C because of growth. So you have great growth opportunities. So the negative impact is definitely on high schools, without doubt. But elementary schools, low performing schools, have a greater opportunity to grow because the state has trajectory in place set up. Third grade, when kids are performing what they call well below basic, well, well, they're unsatisfied, low unsatisfied. If you move those students from low. If you move those students from low unsatisfied to the next level of unsatisfied, you're going to gain points for that. And if you move them the next year, the next year, and the design is, so in third grade, by the time those unsatisfactory students meet ninth grade, they will be master. They'll be at master. Right, so that's something, that, that, that right now is changing, no it's not. But are we getting ready for those changes? Yes, we are. And we'll have an opportunity to grow kids and get double our points for moving those lowest, bottom 25% schools. So elementary schools, you can expect those scores to grow up, you can expect those scores to grow up. And we all have to do, whether you charter or not, you have to put things in place to be prepared for high schools. Right, so that's clarity, and I do want to apologize, because one thing, I apologize to God for this, because the Lord is my self, and I shall not want to. So I apologize for saying you are a lie, you did not tell the full truth. So as a true believer, I want to offer my apology in that.
Exactly.
And so, and so, and it's the will of the board, you could include all high schools. You want the board to, to, to take on that responsibility of covering regular playoff games, that's the will of the board, that's the will of the board, whatever the will of the board is. But understand that the new accountability system, we're talking about the 26, 27 school year, and we're doing things right now to prepare for that. And not this testing cycle, but the next testing cycle, and we move those bottom 25%, we're going to see elementary schools increase because moving that bottom 25%, we're going to get double that.
Thank you, Superintendent Michelle. I did turn something together that I would like to read. This is my last meeting as president of the board, and just wanted to say a few things that I thought important. During my 11 years on the school board, I've had countless conversations with community members across Monroe, as well as with charter board members. These discussions have highlighted some important truths and opportunities for growth in our school system. Our schools thrive when parents and community members are actively engaged. I am grateful to the many individuals who are here and other individuals who dedicate their time and energy to improving our system, especially the Neville Charter Board and supporters of this initiative. Your commitment to the success of Neville High School, its employees and students, is very evident and is very appreciative. I also want to recognize NAPA and Ms. Jefferson and the work of the organization, because they have given so much of their time, resources, and so much money to so many diverse students in Neville High School who graduated over many, many decades at this time. Our community is diverse, with thousands of voices. It is common that most of us surround ourselves with people who agree with us, and sometimes that means our perspective is altered. I have had a few people tell me my district supports, all my district supports this charter application, but the truth is, only a minority of my district supports this charter application. I find it important to step back and ensure decisions are informed by facts, not assumptions, and not rumors. For example, concerns about student behavior, such as rumors of 400 students who don't belong at Neville, have been repeated but are not supported by facts. Instead of letting misinformation shape our views, we need transparent, data-driven reporting to build trust and ensure all voices are heard. By resisting an us-versus-them mindset, which I've heard several times tonight, we can foster a shared vision for progress. This means listening actively, seeking common ground, and recognizing that discomfort is sometimes necessary for growth. It is apparent to me that the upheaval in our system in this past year cannot be understated, and many individuals have lost trust in our system, but this lack of trust is not a new problem. Our community's history, including racial disparities, cannot be ignored. Generations of unequal treatment have created mistrust that we must intentionally work to overcome. This is the basis for the equity movement. Some of you may believe that equity is a dirty word, but it is truly work to undo generations of inequality that cause many modern-day disparities. Racial bias is a reality of our society, but when we only talk about it in hushed voices, we allow it to take root and have power that it should not have. Addressing racial disparities is not the responsibility of one group, it is a collective effort. By acknowledging our biases and having honest conversations, we can create a more equitable system that supports all students. We must create space for reflection and honest conversations that foster understanding. Expect discomfort to ensure equity for all. Moving forward, it is my hope that individuals on our board and in our system will work to foster trust and professionalism. It is my hope that financial transparency will be implemented through reports that will allow the average person to see exactly how much money is spent every month at every site. It is my hope that the charter board works over the next year to become an advisory board that is a reflection of the community it serves and of individuals who can promote a more equitable social power structure. Advisory boards representing the full economic, racial, and religious diversity of each school can strengthen the bridge between the community and the school board to ensure we are responsible to community needs. Perhaps taking a year and putting in the groundwork as an advisory board will lay the foundation for successful charter applications through Monroe City School Board. To foster trust and accountability, I propose several actionable steps. Transparent financial reporting, in that we implement a system where school-level spending is clear and accessible to all stakeholders. Inclusive leadership practices, so that we avoid preferences for people who look like us or come from the same neighborhoods. Ensure hiring practices reflect a commitment to diversity in race, gender, and socioeconomic backgrounds. And school advisory boards, create dedicated time on our board agenda for independent supervisor boards to share their insights and advocate for their school communities. We must be intentional in fostering collaboration, holding one another accountable for fair practices, ensuring that no one is rooting for failure. Our shared success depends on our ability to create an environment of trust, respect, and fairness for all stakeholders. We have an opportunity to move forward with honesty, intentionality, and respect. Let's build a system that values trust, equity, and collaboration. I invite community members to participate in advisory boards, share their input during meetings, and engage in constructive conversations. Your insights and voices have shaped my understanding and will continue to guide decisions moving forward. I want to thank the many, many people who've taken time, including board members, who've spoken honestly and helped inform my representation as school board president and as representative of District 2. Together, I do believe that we can ensure future initiatives, like any future charter applications, are built on strong foundations of trust and support. I do believe that the charter model can be very beneficial to Monroe City schools, but I also believe that it is essential that there are details very clearly outlined to instill trust in the board that might take shape over any of our schools to ensure, ensure success. That is all that I have to say, and with that, I would like to call for the vote. I will ask our attorneys to weigh in. It is my understanding that regardless of attendance of board members, this charter application requires four votes in favor. Is that correct? Yes. All right, Ms. Robinson?
Mr. Sampanero?
In favor.
Mr. Wilson?
In favor.
Ms. Cooper?
Not in favor.
Ms. Schelling?
Vows.
Ms. Hayline?
Estim.
Motion fails.